Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call to order the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. I am joined by Councilwoman Stark. Councilwoman Valenzuela is on the phone, and Councilwoman Pastor will be here soon. First item, minutes of the meeting on March 13th. Is there any discussion, correction, or motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent items two and three. Do any of you need more information or presentation? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent items, two and three.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Items four through eight are for information only. Does anyone need additional information, have questions, or want a discussion? Okay, hearing none. We will then go to item nine. Dynamic transportation message signs pilot project on Seventh Avenue and Seventh Street. Maria Hyatt.
Vice Mayor Williams, members of the Subcommittee, thank you very much. We're back for, I think, the third or fourth time in recent history, since at least since I've been on board as the Street Transportation Director, to talk further about the dynamic message signs, the pilot project. So I'm just going to go back and give just a little bit of history on this project. So it was initiated more than seven years ago as a thought on how do we make sure that traffic can move both to downtown and from downtown, since we do see a lot of vehicular traffic doing that movement. And so, seven years ago, staff saw this as a wonderful pilot program and actually submitted a grant. And that was in 2011. And 2016, the funds were awarded. So you had quite a bit of timeframe between initiating and having a great idea on how to move traffic better and now. And during that timeframe, things have changed. So one of the things I wanted to mention was that we received $942,811 in federal funds for this project. And so Dan Clevinger, Assistant Street Transportation Director, is going to walk through more about our intelligent transportation systems and the intent of the pilot program, and then we'll talk about our recommendations from there.
Thank you, Maria. Good morning, Madam Chair and Subcommittee. I'm just going to touch on ITS on a couple slides, and then we'll get into some details about the dynamic message signs. So the city began their investments in ITS, or Intelligent Transportation Systems, by creating an interconnected signal system, which connects 95% of our 1,150 traffic signals. That allows us to do that communication system typically consists of radio and fiber optics. It allows us to have central control of signals from our traffic management center. When I think about ITS, I think about things like the traffic signals, that communication system I mentioned, traffic signal controller cabinets and electronics inside at the intersection, monitoring systems, that's the video cameras, traffic detection, dynamic message signs like we'll be talking about, and something called autonomous re-identification devices, or ARID. You'll hear me mention that. Those are small antennas and sensors used to track travel times. And next slide, I'll go into just a little more detail on those. So using ITS, we're able to improve safety, mobility, and efficiency. I'm sorry, we had some motion on there. So this photo is a zoomed-in photo of the ARID device, again, autonomous re-identification device. And the job of that sensor is to, it sits on top of the controller cabinet. Those are the boxes you see at every signalized intersection. So it sits on top of that, and it collects travel time information from passing vehicles. So what it does is it detects Wi-Fi-enabled devices, which has a unique signature or identifier for each device. It's anonymous, so we don't know the color of the vehicle, the make of the vehicle, who's driving. We just know that somebody passed by the sensor, and when they get to the next sensor, we'll know that there's a date and a timestamp on it. When they get to the next sensor, we know how long or the time that's elapsed, and that's how we calculate our travel times. So that information gets sent, as it's detected, gets sent to the cloud, and we use software. So traffic engineers can pull this data to identify the travel times. And the hope was to display those real-time on the travel time signs. In addition to that, traffic engineers can use that for performance measures to see how well we're doing regarding timing our system through the corridor. Frankly, planners might use this data, too, to identify travel patterns in traffic.
So I'm just going to add to that really quickly. So this information that goes up to the cloud, it's shared with ADOT so that they can share the movements. But also, there are companies out there, for instance, we just had a demo with Audi recently. And so there's a software app that is actually capturing this data that we provide, as well as what ADOT provides, and it helps provide that travel time detail right to the GPS in Audi cars. It's one of their new features. Audi is just one of them that is using this type of data, and it's very helpful to them.
So that brings us to the Dynamic Transportation Message Signs Pilot Project. So the intentions of this project was to show the real-time travel times to the drivers, the commuters. There's a total of eight signs, two of those would have been back-to-back, so there's six locations. Seventh Avenue, so Seventh Avenue would have three locations, four signs. Seventh Street would have two locations, three signs. And Cave Creek actually would have had one location and one sign. So what that does, it allows drivers on particular street they're on, we provide them with two alternate choices. So if they're northbound or southbound on a street, it'll give a parallel east and west street to consider based on whatever travel time is seen on the sign. And the intent was really not to direct traffic to any one street, it was just to balance the traffic flows, balance the delays, and that's what traffic engineers try to do. What that does is it reduces congestion, reduces fuel consumption, and reduces vehicle emissions. Okay, so the, and those are the key choices. So it allows the drivers to make, so as you're coming upon the sign, if a driver chooses to go left or right to try a different travel path, if there's an incident, congestion, construction, anything, they might have another alternate route available. So the components consist of that dynamic message sign, which I'll have a visual of on the next slide, the ARID devices I mentioned, and then software, which Maria mentioned, to combine the ADOT and city data, because some of the parallel options we have are two freeways, State Route 51 and I-17. And so this is what the sign looks like. It's large, the pole's about 26 feet tall, the mast arm's 40 feet long, and the sign itself is 25 by 5. And so you see the three different displays. So middle one's for the street you happen to be on, the other was for potential alternate routes. Here's a rendering, really, of what it would look like. Of course, the sign is not up, but we tried to set it in there to scale, so that's kind of what it would look like, and this example's on Cave Creek.
So some of the things that happen when you start a project seven years earlier is looking at what happens with other technology. So today, I drove in this morning to Park Central for the Bike to Work Day, and I used my lovely Google Maps to make sure that I was taking the best route. And Google Maps will tell me the fastest way to get there. There's other applications like Waze and, you know, Cars that now provide this data. But seven years ago, Google Maps was not something that everybody used. So now that we look at that travel time being readily available in other formats, we also had an opportunity to really talk this through, something that should have been done prior to the project, as we have readily acknowledged. But we continue to talk to the community, and things that we've heard are the aesthetic concerns. As you saw from the previous diagram, that's a really big sign. And even with direction to put that at only commercial locations, it still is a very large sign. So the concerns, obviously, were near residential areas, it's not acceptable, and even that, the large poles have a significant impact. We also heard from the communities about the unintended potential consequences. So you see the sign, and it says, "It's faster to go another route." Well, where are you going through? Are you taking the major street? That was obviously our intent, but there's a thought that it could possibly lead people down, "I'm going to cut through a neighborhood to get to that other street that was mentioned as a faster route." So we did hear concerns about additional traffic on the Sevens and on Central Avenue, as well as cut-through traffic on side streets. So our recommendation to you is to recommend terminating the project. And the reasons for that, as I mentioned, really are the public concerns, the impact, as well as the ability to receive this information in other formats that have less of an impact on the community. What this means is that we need to look at the finances. So as I mentioned at the beginning, we received $942,000 for this project. We have spent $708,000 to date. And we would need to most likely reimburse the Federal Highway Administration for the use of those funds that have already been spent. However, the equipment, we have in place. So we feel that we could possibly reuse elements of the equipment, either reuse them or possibly sell them, bringing back and reimbursing us for a portion of those costs. May take us a little bit of time, but several of them are equipment that we use on a regular basis and would be able to reuse. Large poles, another city may need them, or we might need them for another project. So we would certainly look to see if we could sell those. And we would also negotiate with the Federal Highway Administration to see if we can reuse the funds that were assigned to this project for a different project and move forward. We did also speak with the community and wanted to reflect what we heard from them on the impact this project would have, which is one of the reasons why we are recommending to terminate the project, but continue to use the ARID devices that provide us with very useful data, sell or repurpose, and coordinate with FHWA on termination and possible reimbursement of the program funds or reuse on another project.
Any questions?
Thank you. I actually sat in one of the meetings you had with residents, and they weren't just in District 3, there were residents from District 6 that were concerned. I think their biggest concern is in the residential areas, it just doesn't fit. The one that you showed, the one is probably the only commercial portion that would have, a part of this project that would have one of those signs. I also was at coffee with a cop this morning, and a couple residents, again, in D-6, but live along Seventh Street, said, "Please don't do this to us. We don't need to have our neighborhood commercialize." So I commend you, this was a tough call, but I'm going to support your recommendation. I'll be happy to make a motion. So I move that we approve the staff recommendation to terminate the project along the Sevens.
Second.
I agree, and I hope that you can either use the materials or somehow sell them to another city that could use them. Technology has changed tremendously in that time, so I agree with this. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I think you're still up.
I am. It's the Street Transportation Show today.
We learned many lessons from this grant.
We have, and this is another lesson. So this is tied to part of this effort that we're talking about today with our after-hours right-of-way construction. Our public notification came out of the signage on proposed, the pilot project on the Sevens. So when you have adversity, sometimes good things come out of it. And so this is one of those pieces that was a very needed process, the public process, making sure that we're working and transparent and communicating, not only with the public, but obviously our council and mayor, as we're going through these projects. So today, we're going to talk about the next level of the public notification for our after-hours work. So as we discussed, we do work in the right-of-way, both our department, Water, Planning and Development, private utility companies. Work happens in our streets daily. Every hour of the day, you could probably find somebody out there doing something. And so then, when we looked at why it's necessary for us to do work at night, this is why. And so we want to, when you set up the barricades and you've narrowed the street because you need to do needed construction, it has an impact on our traffic and our congestion. And so there are certainly projects that we can do during after-hours that we don't have to then shut down that street in order to do this, but we need to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So what we did was we worked internally to really find out what type of noise levels and what type of work we do during the after-hours. So we looked at routine maintenance, and routine maintenance is, you know, it's a pothole. It's, you know, something that happens on a regular basis, it's not noisy, it's really regular work. Then we looked at the replacement of existing equipment and infrastructure. And even though it's a replacement, it's a little bit more heavy work than just a routine maintenance job. So it's changing out a signal that may have been damaged, it's changing out a street sign. So it takes more work and more equipment in that right-of-way. And then we also talked about new installation or construction. So this is something that's never been there before, that is going to be new to the community, may take more time, more effort to put it in, and so we wanted to categorize this one as needing more outreach and more communication, since it's something new. And of course, there's always emergency work that happens, both on street transportation side and certainly on the Water Services Department's side. So then, of course, you have to look at the noise levels. If it's minimal noise, you know, that's a traffic, you know, doing a pothole. Minimal noise, it's not any heavy equipment making vibrating noise and lots of light that's going to disrupt the community. And then, of course, there's moderate noise, and then our loud noise. A loud noise is a repavement of a street and requires those big vibrating rollers and lots of lights in order to make sure everything's safe. That has a lot of loud noise and a lot of impact. So as we looked also at what kind of complaints we get, as well as what kind of complaints we get from the council offices. And so we categorized all of that into development of a policy that we're going to discuss with you today. And as I mentioned at our last presentation on this, we are really good at stealing ruthlessly from other departments and other cities that do things well. And in this case, Planning and Development Department does a fabulous job of working through the public notification process, as well as working with the council offices. And so we have stolen ruthlessly from them, and they have willingly given us their information to do that. So I'm going to introduce Chris Yule, our Deputy Street Transportation Director, who's going to be in charge of this project, and he'll walk you through our proposed policy.
Thank you, Maria, Vice Mayor and members of the Subcommittee. So the policy is in development now, and the key features we wanted to bring to you this morning. So public notification is required, as was already stated, during nighttime hours and when it generates moderate to loud noises. The lower noise issues usually associated with work that is not going to be disruptive to the community, so we're not going to bring those forward to you. It applies to city work and private development. Private development includes not only private sector work, but it also includes work that's going on from our utility partners that are out there in the street right-of-way. It will not be required for weekend or holiday hours and daytime hours. Anything that's at night will be covered by this. Anything during the day will not.
And that's just to add that, that's the piece of the citizen feedback that I mentioned before. So we don't get complaints, and you don't seem to get complaints during weekend or holiday daytime hours. And so that's why our proposed policy is just for that after-hours component.
So again, it doesn't include emergency work. Emergency work needs to happen. We will do what we can to get that notification out, especially with the Water Services Department. They have a very good policy right now to try to notify people when things are going on. But they need to restore services as quickly as possible, or if there's a public safety element, it needs to be addressed. We need to get on that right-of-way. Any projects that are capital improvement, or they're not maintenance in nature, that happen in the right-of-way, we are developing a, during daytime hours, we have a separate policy that we're refining for that, and that's in conjunction with our right-of-way management group. So some other items. Centralized review and approval, as Maria stated, this is going to be my responsibility to make sure it happens. Willing and eager to do so, we'll see how it goes, but we'll try to make sure.
Congratulations.
Again, we're going to thoroughly vet and coordinate this activity. That includes not only the council offices, but our own internal vetting before we even bring it to you. If we just, if it doesn't feel right, we're not going to bring it to council. If you're not feeling comfortable with it, it won't go forward. And that's a promise from us. Again, council office approval is key. And then there will be a permit that will be issued through my team for the work, and it'll describe all the restrictions, the hours, they may even spell out the equipment. They're going to give us the contact people for who's going to be responsible for the project. And that'll be in conjunction with our right-of-way management group as well. So there, it's very much a team effort. Public notification, whoever's doing that work is responsible for doing that public notification. They need to do that at 72 hours in advance from the time that a permit would be issued. They also have to prove to us that they've done that public notification. And so one of those things that is included is that needs to go to residents, hotels, and hospitals that are within 500 feet of the work location. So that's following PDD standards as well, Planning and Development Department. And then if we start having issues, they start using equipment that wasn't approved, making lots of extra noise. If we start getting any complaints at all, we do have the ability to revoke that permit at any time.
I just want to add to that is that one of the things that we heard from the community was what that public notification looks like, and so it will be a standardized template that provides sufficient information. I think one of our, one of our community members, Mr. Drake, mentioned he would like to see a photo or a schematic, at least 150-word description that provides the impact. So we will establish that public notification template that all of the utility companies, as well as ourselves, would have to provide to the community.
So there's always stakeholders involved in something like this, and so we aren't trying to make it more difficult for them to do their work. Our stakeholders, like I've said, include our utility partners, Water Services Department, Planning and Development Department, General Contractors Association. And we're collecting feedback this month and next month to help refine the policy specifics, and then any concerns we'll address before we bring a final policy to you in June. And it's going really well right now, the conversations that we're having, they just, they don't want it to take longer to get the work out there, and that's not our intent. Our intent is to try to make sure that we are adequately notifying the public and your offices when this is going to take place.
So a couple of things to add to this is that we have already met with Water Services Department and Planning and Development to talk them through and receive their input on it. Again, it's the utilities companies, really, that is the next piece of it that we need to finalize to bring back to the Subcommittee for your final review of this. But we have already implemented this process on our work. We haven't had work that have met this requirement yet, but we have already implemented the policy as a standard in our department.
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I want to thank you. And as a former planning director, it is a good process, and sometimes, even with the notification, the work has to get done, but at least the public knows the work has to be done. You know, especially here in the summer, you have to pour concrete in the very wee hours of the day, and usually after midnight. So you still have to do that, but at least you've notified the public, and I think that's important. So thank you.
I have one question. What do you consider nighttime? What are the hours?
So standard hours, working hours traditionally go until 6:00 PM, I believe. It varies, depending upon if it's winter or summer hours, so it's like 6:00 PM till like 6:00 in the morning. And so that would be that period during that time. So evening, overnight, and then early morning.
That's longer than I expected. I thought it'd probably be daylight hours, which could be challenging as the changes. So, but I too, thank you for jumping on this and finding a good solution. So I look forward to having you bring it back.
All right, so next, we get to talk about bicycle program update. And I have Mark Melchenko here. Today was Bike to Work Day. We had a wonderful crowd between Maricopa County, as well as City of Phoenix, and the community out, all met at Park Central. And I was woefully overdressed and didn't ride the bike because I had to come back for a meeting, and I admitted it, but everybody else was ready to go and on their bicycles. It was a wonderful event. So Mark will talk about giving you the bicycle program update.
And I did not ride in with my suit on. Thank you, Madam Chair and Committee members. Today, as Maria said, I'd like to provide just a brief update on our bike program, which is a key element in our transportation system. If we look at our five-year bike plan, there are six distinct ways for us to develop bicycle lanes throughout the city. There's, and these are all outlined in our five-year plan called shifting gears, and neighborhood traffic mitigation. There is also pavement maintenance, where we're able to restripe our streets to provide and delineate new bike lanes, and even areas of opportunity to add protection or buffering. Our capital improvement program also has a series of projects, which we'll discuss in future slides, which add bicycle and pedestrian improvements. In addition, there are also projects where we partner with some of our other agencies in the valley, as well as the development community. We also have a number of projects through our Bicycle Master Plan, and then also through our T-2050 Mobility Plan. We have 11 assessment areas where we are looking at connectivity, both from the pedestrian side and bicycling, ADA improvement. So that is part of our T-2050 Mobility Program, where we assess districts throughout the On December 4th, 2017, we went to the public and held an open house where we looked to gather input on our five-year bike program. We had 150 attendees over at Civic Space Park, and it was very instrumental in gathering information on our five-year plan. We also had an online tool, which also was an ability to gather input via the Internet, and that closed on March 31st. So as you can see, it was a very successful venue. From that outing, we put together a series of common themes. It ran all the way from safety, protection in, on our streets for bicyclists, as well as a series of projects that the community are looking for us to implement in the future. Number of them that they've listed, we have in progress already. The last two items are two points that were brought up from commuters, users, you know, auto users, that drive into downtown, and they were concerned with the potential removal of vehicle lanes. And that's something that, when we add bicycle infrastructure, that is a discussion topic that will continue, comes up, and what we have to work into our system. These are a number of our projects that are underway in various phases. 20th Street project from Grand Canal to Priestwood Park, which is near Glendale Avenue. Third Street from Roosevelt to Indian School is in final design. Oak Street from Third Street to the Grand Canal is in final design. Third and Fifth Avenues, Washington Street to McDowell Road is also in final design, as well as Van Buren Street from Seventh to 24th Street. Each one of these projects have a component of protection for cyclists. It may be in areas of conflict, or there may be other long stretches of protection. as part of those projects. Then we also have two other projects that will, 56th Street has been kicked off this week in D6, as well as Colter Street will be starting in the coming months after we close the pre-design phase of our 20th Street project. So we have a number of projects here listed. And what we try to do is with these projects, not haphazardly put them throughout the city, but create a, a network where we focus on safety and placing these projects on lower-volume, lower-stress streets. We also are taking a comprehensive approach here. We're connecting two major districts through our low-volume, low-stress network that we're trying to build with a safety emphasis, but also tying economic development into this. We have the downtown core connecting with Camelback East, very easily connected with these projects when they're, when they're completed. And these projects also utilize some of the existing infrastructure. On our Oak Street project, we use the existing pedestrian bridge that crosses the freeway as an example. We also look to use HOCS, HOCS signals, both existing and proposed, to create connections over our arterial streets. And then we are looking more and more, as you know, through our Grand Canal projects and, and other canals in our system, to utilize also another very key feature in our city, our canals, for bike and ped connections through the city. On April 28th, Saturday, we're going to be holding a bicycle forum, which we're going to have two keynote speakers from the United, from other areas of the United States. One from the East Coast and one from Boise. We also have a panel at the session, which is a informative session, as well as educational and updating the community on where we are with the bike program. So we have a, a local panel of, of people discussing how our bicycle program in use can tie into economic development. We'll also provide input and comments received on our five-year bike program. And what's interesting is when, when we talk with the community and tell them the life of a project, which is usually five years from start to finish, I think that message needs to go out there because there are gaps in, in, you know, when we develop from pre-design and the study all the way to construction. So that time process or life of a project will also be presented. We also will provide active projects. The list that was, was also as part of this presentation. And then also, we're, we're going to have some of our bicycle registration, and then also a safety rodeo, which through our education from our traffic services section.
So I'm going to add to this one. So at these bicycle forums, we tend to get the advocates, the enthusiasts, the casual riders. But we also wanted to make sure that the discussion between the panels and the speakers is balanced. Because we do know that on our streets, we have people who bike, people who walk, people who drive. And so we wanted to make sure that we were also bringing in all aspects of that during this discussion, so that it's a balanced conversation.
Good point. The bicycle forum, and I need to look at my notes for this. There are five Es that are the focal point for this. There's engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, and evaluation. Those are kind of the, the five Es in developing a safe and successful bike program. So that will be part of the discussion. In moving forward with the bike program, there are a number of challenges. And we'll, we'll show a few of them here. Through our city, there are great opportunities north and south for bicycle corridors. East and west have less opportunities right now. So that, that is one of the, and that's why we have the Planning and Programming Division is we look at that to see how we might be able to solve that issue. We also, when, when we focus our efforts on the lower-volume, lower-stress streets, which was our collector streets, there still is that last quarter-mile or eighth-mile connection to the arterials where you have a lot of your activities. So that should also, is really a challenge. And then as we discussed before, the repurposing of our streets. Many times the discussion to remove a traffic lane. So that is also a challenge. And then the lengthy project implementation, sometimes three to five years. And as, you know, you see the, the buses and light rail in our system, I think at some point in time, the capacity for bicycling, for bicyclists storing on those modes of transportation will have to be looked at further. Some of our next steps in some of this we, we discussed previously is really balancing the needs of all the users in the street. And then developing a network of the lower-volume, lower-stress streets, which really is our focus. And so that's really part of our messaging. And then we would, in the very near future, like to come back to the subcommittee in the fall and provide an update on our program and the final bike program, Shifting Gears report for your viewing. And then with that, I'd like to answer any questions on today's presentation.
Actually, Maria, I love how you finalized your statements. Because right now, we have the five-year bike plan. We have 2050. Today, we'll talk about complete streets, trees and shade plan. We have a new committee on heat islands and how to make our streets cooler. We have ADA issues. And we have a light rail and rapid bus plan in the works. And all these have been designed with a great community input, but independently. And I am now to the point, I'm saying, timeout. Can we bring these together and do an overlay of one over the other and find out what we have? I mean, I'm very concerned that we are reducing the flow of traffic. And truthfully, I'm concerned about safety in many of these aspects. I don't want to stop things, but I think we need something that's more comprehensive, that fits all areas of the city. Because some of these plans do very well in mid-city or other areas, but not necessarily all areas. And I think that needs to be included and reviewed. And, you know, I'm not saying these committees didn't do anything wrong. They didn't. But I think we've just been very active and our progress is somehow may have tripped us up along the way. And I don't want to spend time and efforts and then have to say, oh, wait, that does not work. And we have another plan, we have to go back, rebuild. And so I am encouraging all the departments, just take a little timeout in this summer. Find a way to compile all of these different plans and find out where we are and how we go forward. It's a great city. I want the trees, I want the shades, I want the pedestrians. Bikes are good. But also think we need to recognize cars are still going to be on the streets. And we have to get people in and out if we want economic development to happen, if we want our businesses to thrive. So thank you for the presentation. I look forward to you coming back next fall after all this has happened and tell us if there's any revisions. Any other comments or questions?
So you mentioned that in the Phoenix Bicycle Forum, you were inviting others. I would like to know how and who. So how did you invite them? Or how are they identified to be invited to the Phoenix Bicycle Forum? Or is there a select few that are invited? How is this getting to the greater outside of the bicycle community?
To, to answer your question, Councilwoman Pastor, we have a, a series of avenues that through our public information office, we have everything from a press release to Nextdoor, to other electronic means of getting the word out. We've, and as Maria said, we'd like a, a broad mix of the community for this. So I think we've, we've gone through the means, but we haven't exhausted everything. I think we wanted to see where we were with how many people have registered for this event. Because there is a limit in terms of space. But we will, we will continue to get the word out for this venue on, on the 28th.
So if there's a limit for space, then there, is there a set, I guess, registrations set for those that are motorists? Or I'm trying to figure out how you're going to then determine, or once it's filled, how, if there is a balance? So how is that? I guess that's my, my question is, how are you figuring that out?
Vice Mayor Williams, Councilwoman Pastor, I don't think we're going to know that. What we, what we wanted to do is make sure that we were reaching a broad audience through the different ways that we communicate. The press release has gone out. The information in Nextdoor has also been available. And we've certainly been talking it up at public meetings. But I don't know that we're going to know that we're going to get it. But what we do want to do is encourage that broad outreach and broad attendance. And we would welcome any suggestions that you have on how we might be able to gather more or different groups.
I guess, have you invited the Citizens Transportation Committee?
Yes.
Okay, so I would think you would start there. Then I have several questions, so I don't, okay. The other piece is that, Mark, you mentioned, you used the term areas of conflicts on one of your slides, or you, you mentioned it. What do you mean by areas of conflicts?
As an example, we are using green paint more and more. And yes, we have used them, say, on Fillmore, on the Bike Boulevard, but that is not our, our standard procedure. It is where, like if you come up to an intersection and you have a bicyclist or a bike lane, and you have a crossing for a right turn lane for auto, those areas will be marked in hash and green to provide more direction in areas of conflict. That's, that's an example.
So that's like Missouri, and I can think of Missouri and Camel, and Central. Missouri and Central.
I don't think we, I don't think we.
There's a bike lane.
We, we have hashed areas there, but in some areas of the city, we are beginning to put green paint in those areas.
Right, but I mean, that's the area, type of area conflict, because it's a bike lane, but then it turns into a right, or drivers don't know that it's a bike lane, and they use it as a right, as a turning lane.
Yeah.
A right-hand lane.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what you're talking about. Good to know the vocabulary. And then you said the existing pedestrian bit, bridge on 20th Street. That bridge, when I experienced that bridge, and I experienced biking the whole area, that bridge is really difficult. Because you have to get off your bike and physically pick up your bike and go up about, I don't know, 50 steps? I don't know what it is. And the steps are very narrow. So I guess my question is that, I, I know we're using this existing pedestrian bridge, but is there, I mean, I don't think anybody will, will go up and, and cross. Because what we did is we went under the bridge and then waited to see if anybody's coming off the, they're coming off the, to, what is it, an access road to go onto the freeway? And so we waited and then we, we just crossed. We took our chances. And I was with a group of people, because.
At Thomas or?
Yeah, on 20th Street. Yeah, that bridge, you're talking about that bridge, am I correct?
Over the, the 51 I-10.
You're talking, yes. So as a collective group, we decided not to do that because it was, one of us was not going to be able to carry the bike up. So I think we have to really look at that. If we're talking safety, and I keep hearing this is all about safety, that we need to really look at that. Because majority of the projects that are happening are happening in District Four. And District Four has the highest fatalities of bicyclists and pedestrians. And as Vice Mayor Williams stated, we're doing a lot of things, items in silo. And I'm, I'm the, have been the queen of silo busting because it doesn't make sense to, to us. And then we put resources into this. And so I feel like all of this is now coming together. And we really need to look at all the different plans and see really what's, what's reasonable and what's not reasonable, and go back to the community and say, we can do this. Specifically, pieces in the bike plan, because, or pieces in the T-2050, because there's a deadline and, and people are in a mad dash to meet the deadline and not really looking in the broader sense of, is it a safety issue? What is, what is safety? What is, what does that mean to us? What does that look like to us? And if certain bike lanes don't need to go up north that have been identified, where do they really need to go for connectivity? So those are just my thoughts. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add on to Councilwoman Pastor, who was talking about safety. There is an extensive trail in the washes up in the northern part of the city. And I think the issue there really is safety, because the washes also, there's a lot of transients that reside. And now what's happening is, there were years you would just see lots of children riding on the bike trail. You don't see it anymore. So I think when you talk about safety, hopefully you're, you're talking to the police as well. Yes, the traffic crossings are a safety issue. But I think when you have a continuous trail like that by the wash with what's been happening in our city, that we need to have that dialogue with the, the police department as well.
Well, thank you very much. And we'll see you back this fall. Ginger, recycling market update. We need some good news.
Well, we'll try.
I really don't expect to hear that much.
Might be a little bit of a mixed message. Vice Mayor Williams and members of the subcommittee, thank you for this opportunity to come and give you an update on the recycling market and infrastructure changes. This is our third presentation in a series of presentations focused on our solid waste core operations. So our first presentation was back in January, where we focused in on our landfill operations and what's required of that to meet all of our federal, state, and local regulations. In March, we also came and gave an update on our apprenticeship program and our efforts to grow our own employees. And now here, we're here to talk about recycling. So you are all very familiar with our recycling operations. I want to thank you for coming to tour our facilities and for your support. Lately, so first of all, we've been, Phoenix has been in the recycling business for nearly 30 years. And lately, there's been a lot of attention internationally, nationally, and locally about an item called the China Sword. And so basically, it's the war on contamination. And so we've been asked, what is the impact to that for Phoenix? And so we're going to talk about our update, just an overview of our recycling program. We're going to talk about how the China Sword is impacting us, and then our strategies to basically reduce our contamination. So with that, I've got, I'm going to introduce Joe Jades. He is our Assistant Public Works Director over our solid waste operations. We also have one of the newest members of our management team, Rick Peters. And he is Deputy Director of our Disposal and Diversion Division. Before Joe gets started with the presentation, I also want to acknowledge our MRF operators and partners with Republic Services. We have Tricia Ponse de Leon. She is the North Region General Manager for Republic Services. Go ahead. Thank you, Tricia. And then we also have Alberto Guardado. And Alberto is the South Region General Manager for Republic Services. And with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
All right. Good morning. Thank you, Ginger. So Phoenix, I'd like to just go through a little timeline of some of our infrastructure investments, as well as some of the major activities that have happened. investments as well as some of the major activities that have happened in our recycling programs. So Phoenix was one of the first cities in the country to implement a recycling program based on a, a single container convenience for our customers. So instead of sorting at the curb your different commodities, Phoenix said, put everything in one container and we'll sort it. And so we were one of the first cities in the country to do that. And back in the early 90s, when we started that program, we brought our recyclables to a private, uh, recycling center called the University Recycling Center. Then in 1994, and again in 2006, Phoenix constructed and began operations through a contract of its own, uh, recycling centers. First at the 27th Avenue complex, when we built that transfer station, we also built a recycling center. And then at North Gateway, when we built that transfer station, we also built a recycling center up there. In 2010, we did some renovations at the 27th Avenue facility, and those renovations included some improvements to the recycling center, though most of those improvements were not really based on the sorting equipment itself. It was more moving, uh, assets around at the facility. In, uh, 2013, we had two programs. At the North Gateway facility, we did, uh, make an improvement to some of the capital equipment there, and we added optical sorting, which was a new technology at the time for plastics. We also introduced this new program, Reimagine Phoenix, that, uh, council, um, encouraged us to put forth. Uh, of course, you know all about Reimagine Phoenix because we talk about it every time we can. In 2015, uh, as a result of some of these, um, policies that we're going to talk about from China, we had to make some contract amendments, uh, with our, our operator due to market conditions. And, and then in 2016, that very first recycling center that we began bringing materials to, uh, that facility closed down. Uh, so cities like Tempe that were bringing material there had to find alternative locations. And this is a trend we're continuing to pay some attention to. It appears that Glendale, uh, which also has its own recycling center, is poised to close that down as well. And there's been some rumblings, um, about others in the country that might be closing or consolidating. So I wanted to also talk a little bit about some of the infrastructure challenges at our two materials for recovery facilities. So these were both, uh, have sorting equipment now that is older technology, and in some cases, um, it's also beyond its, its valued lifecycle. And so it's time for us to make some investments. And, and an example of that is, um, a piece of equipment called an Eddy Current separator. Uh, sounds like a fancy name. Really, all it is, is a big magnet that separates aluminum from other metals. And, um, the, the piece of equipment at 27th Avenue, it's just tired. So it's not performing as well as it should. And aluminum is a very valuable commodity for us in recycling, and not capturing all that aluminum is, is a position we don't want to be in. So that's an example of an investment we need to make. There's a couple of other big things that have happened. Uh, at the time these two facilities were constructed, most of the inbound materials that we were recycling were paper. Uh, we all had subscriptions to newspapers that we got in our driveways and we'd read those and put those in the recycling bin, but that's changed. A lot has changed. And so much more of the material we're taking in now are plastics and plastic containers. Well, these facilities just weren't designed for that type of a commodity stream, and so they need to be retooled. And then the final thing, the kind of straw that broke the camel's back, and I heard what Maria talked about earlier about adversity sometimes brings out, you know, some good solutions. I think this is a great example where, uh, in this case, this adversity, these policies are, are really making us put our thinking caps on about how we can refocus our programs. So let me talk about this change in specifications. Started in 2013, so China's trying to clean up its environmental, um, condition in the world. And so they started implementing policies related to recycling as, as well as many other things. And so in 2013, they started by limiting some materials coming inbound. But the really big impact was the announcement in July of last year where they announced this campaign called the China National Sword Campaign. And we, although that didn't really take effect until March of this year, we started to see the impacts of it in the fall of 2017. And so the camp, the, the China National Sword essentially has a few elements. One, they're limiting the amount of permits that they're issuing to allow recyclables back into their country. Two, they have changed, they have just banned certain materials. So what we commonly call in the industry mixed plastics, they have banned, they won't accept them anymore. And then thirdly, they have implemented this contamination standard where 0.5% of contamination in a bale will render it rejected. So you can imagine a few plastic bags make it into a bale of commodity and they would reject it. And after being shipped to the ports and then shipped across the ocean to be rejected at the ports and have to be shipped back is not a good process to be. So everybody's being very cautious. So I want to share with you some of the impacts that we've seen, um, from these policies. Uh, this chart reflects from 2012 through 2017, um, both tonnage and net revenue. So from a tonnage perspective, the blue line, not to our surprise, shows that we've had increased processing tonnage at our materials recovery facilities. With our efforts to divert more and with our efforts to, um, as the city has continued to grow, we've seen increased tonnage. We would normally see, at that same time, an increase in net revenue. Unfortunately, what you can see here in the green line is that our net revenue has declined, um, and that is mostly because of these expenses, either market, so the market fluctuates, that's just normal. We're used to that. But the, uh, market fluctuations have been more significant, more downward. And then we also had the impact frankly of the, um, Arizona State Minimum Wage Law that also affected operating costs. I want to zoom in just real quickly on 2017, a little bit further because this chart doesn't really reflect it as well. So this is a trend line reflecting from January of 2017 through February of this year, showing our monthly net revenue. And what you can see here is that in early 2017, before the announcement of the China Sword policy, our revenues were coming in close to $500,000 on a, on a monthly basis. But we have seen a significant decline in our monthly revenue to the point where we were just over 100 or close to $150,000 per month. Now, these are just, that's, that's a small sample size and markets change, so I don't, that's not, we're not necessarily saying that's representative of what it's going to be, but I think that is a fairly clear picture of what the China Sword initial impacts have been. So of course, that begs the question, what, uh, what is Phoenix going to do in response to these, uh, market signals? So there's, uh, three triggered action items. So we, we've talked about education and enforcement a lot. This is, uh, what I'm going to talk to you about today is kind of a retooled, uh, approach to, to that program. Uh, I've talked a little bit about infrastructure and capital investments, so I want to build on that, and then strategic partnerships. So I had planned on handing out some of these tags, but I've seen my supply is running low. I think Karen Peters may have done a midnight run and taken some of my tags so she can get her neighbors. So I have a few sets of these tags that we'll pass around. But what we're doing is, um, wanting to give some direct customer feedback to our residents on their recycling. And so, um, first, credit to our zero waste team, to the Recycle Partnership, an organization that kind of designed this program, uh, to our Customer Engagement Services Team and to the City of Atlanta, because much like Maria is, uh, free to steal great ideas from others, we, we love to do the same thing. And so this program was actually implemented in Atlanta in a small scale. We saw some of the successful, um, outcomes of that and decided, let's, let's build a program for Phoenix. So the way this program works is we target routes that have the highest levels of contamination, and we go and we actually inspect the containers, the recycling containers, and we're giving direct feedback to the customers by tagging their container. And they get this shine on tag, um, if they're doing really well and everything's great and we continue to encourage them. Or they get this oops tag if there's some contamination problems, and we give them some direct feedback. For example, there was plastic bags, or you bagged your recyclables, or there was clothing in the recycling container, things like that. So here's a couple of quick examples of, a couple of the containers that we saw. So you can see plastic, there's actually food in here, there's styrofoam, toys, um, lots of contaminants. Pizza box, so we get questions about pizza box all the time. Best thing I can say is pizza box, clean and no grease, perfectly recyclable. If it's got grease contaminating, it, it's, it's ruined the fiber and better to just throw it away.
Or, or tear it in half. Yeah. Recycle the clean part and then throw away the other. If you actually do composting, you can actually put the cardboard, the greasy part in your compost as well. So there are options, but some would say, when in doubt, throw it out.
That's very confusing to the general public because all of us, and I remember Councilwoman Nowkowski sitting at one of these, specifically asked that question and was told, he, him and his spouse have a debate over it and was told he could put it in the recycling as long as it was there, it was clean and it had nothing to do with grease or stains. So that's confusing because we've been, and I did a show on it, uh, stating that they can.
Yes.
Put that in the recycling. So I'm just saying, there needs to be a lot of clarity.
Yes.
Because I did a recycling show and I, that was one of the main, um, dialogue that we did back and forth.
Yes.
So.
So Vice Mayor Williams and Councilwoman Pastor, um, recycling, we're trying to make our messages more simple. Um, as there are changes in the policies, as, as far as what is allowable contamination that impacts what we can and cannot recycle. Um, but what our message is, is cardboard is recyclable. Pizza boxes are, are cardboard, they're recyclable. Um, but the grease, the cheese, that's what we would, um, consider contamination. And so that's why we're trying to give our, um, residents options, right? So again, it is recyclable, but if you want to take it up to the next level, recycling 201, if it has the grease, has the cheese, tear it apart, right? Put one in one box, one in the other. The, the other thing is, you'll see a lot of pizza places now, they're actually putting sheets in there to reduce the grease so that it won't get on the box. So they're taking efforts as well. They do the sheet, or I've seen a little plastic to raise the pizza so that way the grease or the cheese won't get on the box as well. And then again, thirdly, recycling 301, if you have compost, you can put the greasy part, the cheesy part in there as well. So, um, we're trying to give residents options when it comes to recycling, but cart, bottom line, cardboard is recycling. If it's in there, it's not going to mess up our recycling program.
Right.
I have one more question.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity. Since it's, uh, cardboard is, uh, able, you're able to compost it, can we put it in the brown can?
Yes, if you are, um, Chair, sorry, Vice Mayor Williams and Councilwoman Pastor, if you are a member of our Green Organics program and have the tank container, yes, you can put it in there.
All right. Now that we've solved the pizza box dilemma, we'll never solve it.
You started it.
Okay, so I want to share with you, uh, some of the preliminary results. So we did one route in the city, so this is a very small, uh, segment, but we did five interventions, so five consecutive weeks of this oops shine on program, and I want to share with you some of the results. In the first week in this particular route, which was a lot of contamination coming in this route, 72% of our customers were getting oops tags. And it's not just a key pizza box. This is like those containers you saw, pretty significant contamination. Uh, and only 28% were getting the shine on. But by the fifth week of consecutive interventions, we had flipped that. And 71% were actually now earning the shine on. So this is really, uh, good positive results. We want to continue to take this to other routes in the city. Uh, it's our intent to go back and check on this one again after a few months to make sure this kind of change has held. But we're excited about this because being able to improve the quality of the material coming into the recycling processing center is a win all across the board. It's going to reduce our costs, it's going to make for better quality material, it's, it's going to be great for us.
Okay, the question's going to be, how did you know it was my can? Why do I get the oops?
Well, Vice Mayor, because we flipped your cans lid and we looked in there and we said, oh, now, there will be some, and we've already gotten some, like my neighbor must have put that in my container. We're, we're not, it's not really intended to be personal, and that's really important here. I think that the tags are very much written to be, it is intended to be a direct communication. Uh, it's, it is intended to be a direct communication, but it is not intended to be a personal, just giving recommendations on how you can recycle better. And we've gotten some great results, I, I think, and we, we did not get a lot of phone calls of angry residents. So, uh, that's not to say that that will be the case always, but, um, that did not happen in our first pilot.
And I'd like to add on to what Joe said. So the last couple of years, we've been focusing on the top 10 things in the bin, right? So focusing on what we want our residents to recycle. And so because of now that the war on contamination, what we're trying to do now is focus on reducing contamination and getting the bad things out. So this is our educational efforts in, um, in that arena.
So, um, I mentioned, I've talked a little bit about capital investments and I've kind of, I think, laid the foundation for why we need to make some investments. So I want to talk a little bit about where we're at in that process. We are now in the planning stages of, um, re, retooling our capital program to see what, uh, how we can fund these investments that need to be made. We're, we're thinking about focusing on the North Gateway Facility first, and that is because we think it takes less investment to bring that to a, kind of the state of the art of a facility. We'd like to add more optical sorting technology, not only for plastics, but now also for paper, being that paper is one of the bigger challenges in, in making the end product. And we think there's a lot of great outcomes here. First off, we're going to be able to increase diversion because what's happening right now is a lot of material is not getting through to be baled as recyclable because they're being, we're having to be so extra careful about the quality of those bales at the end. And that's really, um, upsetting for us because we hate to see that material not being captured. Uh, secondly, we think we're going to be able to make, um, different types of end products into the market. So we have really become dependent on making a product for China because they paid great value. But we need to be able to now make different types of products that other markets might desire. An example is there's a company in Casa Grande that is interested in a product that's got more of an office paper mix, the, the white paper, um, rather than the cardboardy mix or a newspapery mix. And if we can make a product for them, they, they may be interested in being a buyer. And, and that's another part of our strategy is, you know, we have, um, been focused in the past on this linear, linear economy model where we just view trash as the important thing for us to do is safely handle it, bury it and, and make sure we have a sanitary situation. But now we want to move to this circular economy model where not only are we ensuring every, you know, the sanitary conditions of how we handle it, but that this was a resource, uh, it was, uh, energy was put into building or making this product and it's got value and we need to recover that value. And in so doing, as we look at our Resource Innovation Campus and how we can develop new end markets, we want to, um, much like in our financial, our personal finances, we talk about diversifying our portfolios. Well, we don't want to be dependent on just one end market. We would like to make sure we have, uh, the ability to get into multiple end markets by making a variety of products. We think that positions ourselves much stronger to avoid impacts from something like China changing its policy and, and having these significant short-term impacts. So I'm going to turn it back over to Ginger.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. So, uh, in summary, basically, um, you know, we, we're dealing with the China Sword, which is the 5%, 0.5% allowable contamination. Before, it was 3% in some markets, 5% for other commodities. Now it's almost 0% allowed. So Joe, I think, did a wonderful job to talk about our strategy on dealing with this. This is a major disruptor for the recycling market. We don't know though if this is a short-term impact or a long-term impact. Um, but you can see, we've laid out our strategy here today. Uh, if it gets significantly worse, we will come back to you and update you on what's going on and, and what our plan of action is. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I have a, a question. In the past, I seem to recall that Glendale, maybe another city or two, uh, we handled their recyclables? And you mentioned they're going to close their program? Is it, I mean, are, are no more recycling cans? Is that what you're saying? And we don't purchase them? Could you explain a little bit more about what's going on?
Yes, Vice Mayor Williams. So in the past, we have had reciprocal agreements with other cities that allow them to bring their recyclables to Phoenix. Uh, when the market was good, uh, when, when we had, uh, larger net revenue amounts, we would actually share part of the net revenue with those cities for bringing those recyclables to us. Um, now that the market, um, you know, the revenue's not there, you've seen how our you've seen how our net revenue has tanked. Right now, we're accepting the recyclables, but for the time being, we are not sharing the net revenue because we don't have it to share. Newer cities are approaching us and asking us to take their recyclables. But at this time, we are saying no until we're able to make infrastructure improvements, build the local markets, and that sort of thing. So we don't want to accept it right now while we're still in the transition phase of figuring this out ourselves. And then, Joe, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to add about Glendale or.
Yeah. Yes, Vice Mayor, with respect to Glendale, sorry to mislead. They will still have a recycling program for their citizens. What they have is their own materials recovery facility. And what they're doing is they're closing that down and they're looking for other places to take their material. They're one of the cities. There's many cities around us that have contacted us over the last several months, asking us if we would be interested in taking their materials.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Very enough. We thank you very much for an update. Let us know how it proceeds and if the markets change or a new market would happen to come up. And I think that's something we need to be on the outlook for. Thank you. And thanks to our MRF partners. Okay. Do you have any public? We do not have any public today. Are there any future agenda items you would like to have? No comments, so we are adjourned.